I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their government, for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, we have a short but action-packed meeting scheduled for today. So we do have minutes from Wednesday, the 27th, both executive session and regular session.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the regular session and the executive session of Wednesday, July 27, 2016.
That's moved and seconded. All those in favor? Mr. McGee abstains with absentee. All right. Margie, do we have a couple of announcements? It's a tri-town water use policy, right? So we're still in phase four. We've gotten a little bit of relief from the rain, but with the reservoirs just below 70 percent full, there is still no outside use of water. So this is phase four. And Benji, will we update this as an on-need basis, or?
We already tri-watered the this past Tuesday, and we're at 54 percent at the reservoirs. So, once we hit the, between the 50 and the 40, there's gonna be a lot more restrictions and enforcement. So hopefully, we don't get to that, but we're at 54 percent right now. We're still in phase four.
Okay, great. We do have a, seeking a wiring inspector. So Town of Holbrook is seeking qualified applicants for a part-pine position of wiring inspector. A resume and cover letter should be submitted to Timothy J. Gordon, Town Administrator. Town of Holbrook, 50 North Franklin Street, Holbrook, Massachusetts, 02343, or it can be emailed to t gordon@holbrookmassachusetts.us. Deadline for applications should be September 16. We also have a vacancy of the Town Forest. We filled one position most recently. We have a second position that's open. Information on this committee could be found on the Forest Committee's page on the town's website. Any resident interested in volunteering their time to support one of the town's greatest natural resources is encouraged to send a letter of interest as soon as possible to Tim Gordon as well, or email t gordon@holbrookmassachusetts.us. We're also looking for a licensed surveyor. The Town of Holbrook is looking for a resident who is a licensed surveyor who would be willing to serve on a building structure survey board to inspect unsafe building structures. If you're a licensed surveyor and would like more information, please call the Town Administrator at 781-767-9043, or email t gordon@holbrookmassachusetts.us. We do have a notice from the Public Works Department. So on Thursday, September 15th, our neighbor Randolph will be doing some emergency water repairs at the intersection of 139, which is Mill Street and Center Street. So these repairs, because all the system is connected, will cause low water pressure and discolored water in Holbrook. What time does that start, Benji?
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM. And then we would, residents would get discolored water for?
Once they do the shutdown, we'll be ready to let it lock. You could see discoloration of the water there. Pressure should be okay, because it's not standing much at all, but discoloration is very possible.
So residents are advised to just run their taps?
Well, if there's a call, we'd like to know if you can do again dirty water, and any issues with the water, we'd get the call. So 678-1800, so we know, and we'll address it.
Excellent. Thank you. This is an open meeting, so if you have any citizens' concerns, I would like to be able to hear them at this point. No? Okay. Culture Council?
Want to just do that one? Yeah. Okay. I make a motion for a member, a new member of the Holbrook Cultural Council. I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Anja Harton to the Holbrook Cultural Council with a term to expire on September 14, 2019.
Second. And all those in favor?
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint the following members to the Holbrook Cultural Council for a second three-year term. Brandy Sandog with a term to expire on August 28, 2019. Judy Asnar, Kelly O'Leary, and Patricia Kennedy, all with terms to expire on September 25, 2019.
Okay. I have a motion seconded. All those in favor? All right. We do have a special guest, Reverend Tim Rogers, who's the pastor of St. John's Episcopal Church here in Holbrook, wants to inform us about an after-school program. So the floor is yours, Reverend.
Thanks so much for having me here tonight. I'm relatively new to Holbrook. I've just been at St. John's for a couple of years now. And I live in Quincy, and I'm only half-time there, so I don't really have a feel of the town yet. But as I'm getting to know more folks in Holbrook and more conversations I have with people, it leads me into a deeper understanding of what the needs are here in Holbrook. And that specifically happened this summer, where I got the privilege to go over to the high school and watch the drama program that they have in the summer. They have that three-week drama camp that everything from little kindergarteners all the way up to 12th grade get to go and do this wonderful community-building program, and a lot of fun for the kids. And I got to talking with Mary and the other teacher that runs the program, and really sat down with them and started to talk about what are the needs in Holbrook, especially for the kids. Since we have the church that's only a block from the junior high and senior high, and pretty soon it'll be a block from all the schools, and we have an empty parish hall all week long. We have meals on wheels that help out, that, you know, we open up and they take up one little corner for a few hours in the morning, and the rest of it's wasted time and wasted space. So we thought at St. John's, what can we do to give back to the town and what's needed? And so I'm also a chaplain at Norwood Hospital, and I see an awful lot of overdose cases, especially kids. My first day at Norwood, I had to anoint with the last rites a 24-year-old girl that was found in her closet with a needle sticking out of her arm. And it's just things that shouldn't be happening today, or happening today. I gave you the proposed program there, but on the second page, on the white page, I Xeroxed a couple of pages from a study that was put together by Good Samaritan Hospital, Stewart Healthcare. It's called "The Population Health Improvement Report of 2015." And if you notice, just in the little highlighted areas on page 16 there, it says, "Compared to 2009, mental health-related discharges increased in both Stoughton and Holbrook." And you could see how they have just risen in the area. And then on the back page, there's also the alcohol and substance-related hospitalizations, as well as substance abuse admissions for the Department of Public Health. And number nine is our Town of Holbrook, and it's really high. It says right there, "Taunton and Holbrook and Brockton also recorded higher program admission than the average in the Commonwealth." And then at the bottom, "The opioid-related hospitalization rates were highest in Brockton, Holbrook, and Stoughton, and were twice that of the state rate." And that's alarming. And I'm looking at these kids that I see walking past my church every day, and I'm like, what can we do to help these kids have a safe place? At least, what can we do as a small church with limited amount of ability that we can give back as a gift to this community? And so talking with some parents, talking with some teachers, I spoke with the school committee about a month ago, we came up with the idea of having an after-school program. And it would be focused on, at least for us, because we have a limited space, 7th and 8th grade students, because they could walk right over from the school to the church. And it would be basically giving them a safe place to gather Monday through Friday after school, those critical hours between 2:30 to 5:00, and giving them some mentoring with homework stuff, and also helping them, giving them some life skills. A lot of the kids today, they don't know how to do simple things, like someone on a button or doing their laundry. A lot of the kids, their main meal is lunch at school. They go home, and some of these statistics that are on the second and third page here, these are their homes. So they'll go home, and there won't be anybody there to make dinner. There won't be anybody there that's gonna teach them how to deal with conflict in a good way. There's nobody there that's gonna, you know, say, you know, "You're a kid, you should still have some fun. It shouldn't be so serious." So what we're gonna attempt to do at St. John's is to develop a program that's gonna be focused on 7th and 8th graders, to give them a little slice of safety, a little slice of a chance at a better life. And we're very excited about this. I'm kind of terrified and excited at the same time, because I've never done anything like this before. I've never done grant proposals before. But I sat today with a representative from Good Samaritan Stewart, and they're very excited about this program, and they're gonna let me know by the end of the month how much they'll be able to fund towards it. I'm looking at a halftime position, so I'm at the church half-time right now, 20 hours. I'd like to be there full-time. And the other half, in addition to the parish, I want to run this program. And recruit volunteers from around town, different churches or organizations, whatever, train the volunteers, so that we can have a safe place for these kids, so that when they go on, later on in their high school, they'll have a group of kids that will be supportive for them, and it'll only be positive for them, so that they'll have a better chance to get on with this life. And again, it's all about this opioid stuff, the heroin. You know, I don't have to tell you. It's just, it's devastating. So we're just trying to do a little sliver of what we can do at St. John's, and I wanted to let you guys know about it, and if you can help, or we can help each other in any way together, I think that would be amazing. This is also supported through Holbrook Cares, and we're also through the Council of Churches. We're meeting on, about a monthly basis now, and everybody's really excited about this program. So.
How many, how many children do you think you might be able to serve?
Well, we're gonna start.
Your facility is on the smaller town.
Yeah. I'm gonna, you know, if we get 10 to 20 kids in the first year, I'd be ecstatic, you know? And then what I'd like to see, because the guy from Stewart today said, you know, "There's a lot more need than 10 or 20 kids in this town." And I said, "I know, but wouldn't it be great in a couple of years that we outgrow St. John's Parish Hall, and we have to move it to another place, and then we add other grade levels? Wouldn't that be amazing?" And he said, "I think that's exactly what's gonna happen." So.
And what's the timing, do you think?
Well, it depends upon grants. You know, I've applied for six major grants. Again, I've never done grant writing before, but I sat with a grant writer, and they said that, you know, "This is what you're supposed to do," so I sent them all out. I should know by the end of this month on two $10,000 grants, and then whatever Stewart may pony up. And so the basic budget for the year for the entire program, because we wanna do it Monday through Friday from 2:30 or so till 5:00. Also, teaching kids how to cook, cook healthy meals, and we're gonna work with the food pantry that we house at St. John's, the ecumenical food pantry, to teach kids how to make very healthy, simple meals at home. And if they don't have the food there, we're gonna give them the food to take home. So we're looking at Monday through Friday, 2:30 to 5:00, and then an extended, maybe like a 1 to 4, 1 to 5 on regular vacations, and then have a three-week program in the summer that would either be right before or right after the drama camp, so that we can work in conjunction with them, so that we might be able to give a good chunk of kids six weeks of activity that would bring them, you know, to be better citizens and better people.
Perfect. Sounds great. Questions?
Okay.
Any assistance to help the kids?
Absolutely.
So, just like I said, I just wanted to let you guys know what's going on, and if there's any ideas that you could send my way or our way, or if anybody is interested in volunteering or helping out.
If I were going to do it, I'd be talking to Sheriff Piladi. He's very receptive.
Sheriff?
Piladi. Mike Piladi is the Norfolk County Sheriff.
Okay.
He is someone that involves an awful lot of things and does an awful lot of good things. But he'd be a good man to talk to.
Because this is the type of program where we wanna get the whole community in, involved in little pieces of it, so that nobody, not one group feels like, "Oh, I have to do that all the time." If we have guest speakers come in, if we have, you know, artists come in to do different things, the more that we do that, I think the better.
Twenty children for the school year. How much you think it would cost?
We have a, I have a budget. I didn't bring it with me.
No, but you must need additional funds, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We have a budget of about $45,000, and that would include startup supplies, you know, salary, insurance that we have to pay extra at the church, all the supplies for the kids, you know, bringing in different, you know, musicians or whatever for the kids. We're also in contact with Alcoholics Anonymous, Al-Anon, Alateen, and Narcotics Anonymous to come in periodically, people that are in recovery, to talk to the kids about what it's like to be either an addicted person themselves, or coming from addicted homes, and what they can do, and the tools that they can learn, so that they can have a healthier life.
What if people would be generous to you?
I'm sorry?
I think people would be generous to you.
I hope so. I hope so.
I really do.
I'm really excited about this.
Don't ever let anyone like this.
And neither have I, to be honest with you. It's by the seat of my pants.
But you can't fail.
Yeah, well, yeah, I forget, you know, I'm like, "Okay, good. You give me the idea, I'll go with it." And we'll find out, you know, maybe it's gonna, I know it's gonna have to be tweaked along the way, and we'll learn as we go along. But I really wanted the town to know what was going on, so that, you know, not only to help us, but also if there's stuff that we can, you know, if the kids could do a project or something that might help the town, or something like that, you know, we can work hand-in-hand. Okay?
And I guess it goes the other way, too. Obviously, you know, you're doing this for our community, so anything that you might need, certainly bring it to our attention.
Great.
And we'll do whatever we can to either get you in touch with the right people.
Great.
Or advertise a program, or, you know, whatever you might need. Obviously, let us know. I think we're kinda chained to your success, and as you have success, then the town has success. And we're interchangeably linked that way.
Yeah, yeah. So we're, we at St. John's are real excited about it.
When are you there? When are you around?
I'm there 20 hours a week. So I'm usually there on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Sundays. And then, of course, if there's emergencies. I'm also chaplain at Norwood Hospital, but my boss over there is really flexible about with my time, so if something comes up, I can leave there at a moment's notice and come down here.
Do you have a card, or?
You know, I didn't bring a card with me, right? Isn't that, see? I'm not as professional as I look.
We have stuff in the packet. There's an email address that's here, so.
Someone that I made.
Yeah, so. Okay. Any other questions or thoughts or concerns?
No.
Thank you so much.
Wish you good luck. Thank you very much for putting yourself out there.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Great. We have, we do have a hearing for an application on beer and wine. It's in three minutes. Benji, would you like to join us for just a few minutes and give us an update? I know we hit a lot of your stuff already, but I don't know if there's anything further we should discuss.
Please, we'll get to the podium. Beer isn't the water being so low at the Holbrook Dam. We have an opportunity to go in and do some kind of creek pointing. The guys have been down there yesterday and today, and hopefully, it'll give us a little bit longevity going down the road, so we don't have to come up with a bunch of money all at once to... And what it shows the DCR is that we are in good faith, trying to do something with the dam to give it some longevity. So our guys, the DPW, we're down there doing that anyway, so.
Great.
And also, the gas trench at Pine's Feet's been squared away. The light sequences have all been straightened out, so everything's working pretty nice up there.
Yes, I can attest to that every day. It looks great.
Any questions for Superintendent? No. Thank you very much, Benji. Great. So it is 7:20 now, so we will open the hearing on the applicant, application of the Holbrook Beer and Wine, Inc., doing business as Holbrook Center Package Store. Jose Andrade, manager. It's 41 Plymouth Street, for wine and malt beverage package store license. Motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor? Great. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
How are you?
Very good.
Little bit of deja vu for me. I think I was here a month ago.
Yes.
Union Street Pub.
Yes.
And I hope that's going well. It was a smooth closing, anyway. So anyway, I represent Mr. Andrade, and he's someone that's known to me. I've represented him over the years. And this location has always had a liquor license there. You know, because it's a new license, obviously, the standard is the public convenience, need and public convenience. For 60 years, there's been a liquor license there. In fact, up till three weeks ago, there was a liquor license there. So this is a location at 41 Plymouth Street where there's always been a liquor license. What happened was, is the tenant got a better deal. She got herself a full liquor license, and she left. But Mr. Andrade, who coincidentally owns the property in a trust, thought that he could revitalize it, and he understood that the beer and wine license was gonna be turned in, and that's why we're applying for a new license. He thinks that the combination of a grocery store and selling beer and wine would be a good use for the property, a very consistent use for the property, since it's been that for 60 years. And I would argue to you that he's your man, because he owns a large liquor store in Stoughton on Washington Street, Andrade's Liquors, so he's got experience. He's not a neophyte by any stretch. He knows what he's doing. He's comfortable. He's not gonna get fooled. He's not gonna sell to minors. And as I said, this location has always been that, so we're not trying to forge, you know, we're not trying to plow or forge new ground. This is something that has already been established in the Town of Holbrook as a public convenience, and that's what we have proposed before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and so is my client.
How long has the, has Mr. Andrade, how long have you operated the other facility in Stoughton?
Since 2003.
2003. And have you operated any other facilities?
I used to wanna make the license for that.
Okay. And then you just became the landlord and opened up the other facility? Okay, okay. So you have a pretty deep history, then?
Yes.
In Holbrook? Okay. Who's gonna be managing the facility?
I am.
You, so you'll be day-to-day manager? Okay. All right. Any hours of operation you're seeking is 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 to 11:00 on Sundays?
Right.
Okay.
11:00 PM on Sunday, yeah. Are the others, were the other hours on Sunday?
The other's off, too.
Are they open for those hours, too?
I don't know if they're open at least on Sunday.
But they have the option to. They're licensed to open if they want to. Okay. Anything other questions standing?
No. You want from public?
No.
Daniel, also?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application of Holbrook Beer and Wine, Inc., doing business as Holbrook Center Package Store, Jose Andre, manager, for the retail package store license to expose, keep, for sale, and to sell wine and malt beverages, not to be drunk on the premises, at 41 Plymouth Street, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Sundays. And the application be forwarded to the ABCC for consideration.
Motion seconded, Mr. Lee. All those in favor? Excellent. Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Shaw. Appreciate it. Welcome back to Holbrook.
He lives here as well.
He lives here.
We just supported the citizen.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Move to close the hearing on the application for Holbrook Beer and Wine Incorporated, doing business as Holbrook Center Package Store.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Excellent. Great. Final order of business is just the other department updates, so treasurer, town collector, how are you?
Good, thanks.
I don't know if you always go, what order everyone goes in, but.
They don't usually last. Last week, I sent out demand notices for real estate for 14, 15, and 16. So I've already had 11 people respond to them, so they got them on Monday, so. So they're coming in, so I'll probably be busy with the questions, and most of them trying to figure out how they were late, or, you know, skipped a payment. So this usually, it's a little time-consuming. Water payments are due the 15th. They've been coming in steadily, so I imagine tomorrow will be hectic day. And I'll also forward the, to the Board Council, the funding for the Pond Street and the, and the, the standpipe, right? The standpipe a million one, so I would probably expect I'll be in front of the selectmen again, probably in your second meeting in October, to sign the papers.
Sure.
So. Other than that, there's nothing new going on.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Chief Smith? Sorry, Chief McFadden?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, and actually, Chief Smith sends his regards and apologies for being unable to be in attendance tonight. I have one announcement and a very brief report. The announcement is the Fire Department Open House has been scheduled for Saturday, October 8th, between 10:30 and 1:30. Hopefully, it'll be well-attended. Pencilled in on your calendars. And without objection from the Board, I'd like to invite this Communications Director Hook up to give sort of a joint public safety report on an incident that took place last week, which involved an individual in some distress and in need of some medical assistance. But that individual's location wasn't known. There was an excellent effort by all of the public safety personnel, police, fire, and dispatch as well, a number of techniques we used to locate this individual and bring this incident to a successful and non-tragic conclusion. Communication Director Hooks Dispatches were instrumental in gaining some GPS information that helped us locate, locate this party by use of locations and directions from certain points. The Police Department and police officers did an excellent job with a bunch of traditional search techniques, and the Fire Department also was able to utilize the department's thermal imaging devices as well to locate this party and get them transported to an area of medical facility. I'll turn it over to Communications Director Hook at this point, if he has anything to add on that, or to continue his report. But I just wanted to thank all the police officers, firefighters, and dispatch that were working that night for a great job, a job well-done in that case, so.
Great to hear.
Thank you, Chief. I think you covered most of it with the, regarding the search. Dispatches do have some technology available to ping a cellphone through the wireless carrier to kinda triangulate where these people are, so we do have some, some of that that we can utilize during these type of situations. So I'd just like to give a brief update on the Communication Center. Like Chief McFadden said, it's been unusually busy a couple of weeks. Usually, when school's back in session, things seem to slow down a little bit. It's not the case lately. We've actually had a few challenging calls. One was the one Chief McFadden just spoke about. We also, in Abington, we had a tragic call with a young boy in an accidental shooting, if you remember, a couple of weeks ago. So those type of calls are the type of calls that stay with you forever, and they're very trying on the people involved. So we're working through that. Just a couple of other updates. I wanna update on Canton. We're still waiting for, the grant has been submitted for some time. Back in May or June, we submitted the grant. We're still waiting on the results of the grant. I was told we should hear something by next week, so the next meeting, hopefully, I have some positive news to report, and we can start moving with Canton. We are, Canton and I are meeting, developing policies and procedures, and meeting with both unions, so once we get that contract or grant award from the state, we can move forward very quickly. We have a lot of work to do before the snow flies, because we gotta do a lot of outside work, so we wanna get that done as quickly as possible. The other announcement that I have is, a couple of meetings ago, I mentioned that we were going to start the car seat program up again, where people can come into the public safety building and schedule an appointment, come in, and have their car seats inspected, installed, and we will provide car seats to those who can't afford them, or just can't get them for some reason. So if any of the residents want to utilize this, the service, they can call the Communications meet with them and help them install this car seat. This is more of an education thing. We don't, you know, we don't physically install the seats. We want to educate these people on how to install their own seats, so that's what the process is. And we have applied for a grant, we do have some existing car seats, and we have applied for a grant for some additional seats. So I think that's all I have for tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
How long is the program, the car seat program, going to go on for?
Um...
Does it have a definitive end, or?
No, there's no timeframe.
Okay. Great. No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good work on the search and rescue. Chief, you weren't here last week when I gave congratulations to your team, who helped my wife when she broke her ankle. Tremendous professionals, and it's great to see them in action. You hope that you never have to see them in action, but when you do, you feel confident that they're given the very best care to the community of Holbrook, so I certainly appreciate, you know, all their efforts, so.
Thank you. Best wishes for speedy recovery.
Yeah.
As I was saying...
You and I both.
Glad to see people in social, physical, and...
That's right, that's right. So, I don't know if there's any other items to come forward to the Board at this point in time? No? That being said, we'll adjourn this meeting, and we'll meet in two weeks' time. So, are those in favor of adjourning tonight?
Let you move.
Great, thank you very much.